We don't have a good one. Every step is the opposite. So we just don't have. I mean, they have the confidential something on the. Built in. And I was talking before, I know a lot of offices and it comes to be a. Hi John.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi John.
You're John.
What? Yeah.
How are you?
I am good. How are you? So nice to see you again.
It's been a while.
Yeah, have you been doing this in so long?
Um, yeah, do you do? Probably.
You seem to be struggling.
Yeah.
Are you living in Oregon?
No, grass.
Uh, grass.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
I did rent it in open for three months while we were housing. But we never intended to.
I was on a flight.
It's really too stepford like.
Yeah.
Very, I mean, it's, they got a lot of nice stuff.
That's where, that's where I started my work.
Okay, we're gonna get, we have a meeting to start here. Um.
All right, well, this is kind of fun. It's funny to see you again. I know, I've seen it. There's already controversy.
There we go. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of City of Sonoma. And just want to make the process clear for comments from the public. There will be two opportunities for members of the public to address items that are not appearing on this agenda. And the early public comment period, which is agenda item number, actually, it won't be item number one, but it'll be later. A little bit later, will be limited to 10 speakers. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. Speakers who do not have an opportunity to speak during the first public comment section will be allowed to make their comments during the later public comment period, agenda item 10, provided there are no more than 10 people in the first public comment section. And then please be courteous, please turn off your cell phones and watches if you have a watch that's really noisy while this meeting is in session. You don't have to like stop them from working just if they make sound. All right, so we did have a closed session, but there's nothing to report on that closed session. I would like to, at this point, ask if we have any members of the council that has any, have any changes to the agenda that they would like to request. Oh, I haven't done that yet. You're right. Thank you. I will get, I will get there. I will get there. Let's stand up and do the pledge. Okay, I'm gonna call, okay, so I'm gonna, please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So I will not report on closed session again since we already did that. And so now I will once again ask if there's any members of the council that would like to change, have any changes made to our agenda tonight. All right, see none? Then I would like for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Deputy City Clerk, please take the roll call.
Vice Mayor Wellender.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Ding.
Aye.
Councilmember Low.
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney.
Yes.
Mayor Faravas.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And now you once again take the roll call for attendance.
Vice Mayor Wellender.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Low. Councilmember Gurney.
Yes.
Mayor Faravas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Here, that's what I am. There we go. All right, now I'm gonna go to agenda nine, number one, which is the public hearing. And what we're gonna have tonight is a presentation, and this is of the fourth public hearing to review and gather feedback on the draft boundary maps of the city's voting districts pursuant to election code 10010A1 California Voting Rights Act. And I'm gonna hand this over to David Guin, our city manager.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So tonight is the fourth meeting, and tonight we're gonna talk about and focus on a map that was discussed last, at the last meeting with some potential modifications based on your feedback. In addition, the consultant, Paul Mitchell, who from a districting partner, who's gonna be presenting this via Zoom, will also talk about the process of numbering, identifying the districts, and sequencing of those districts. We do wanna make it clear, though, and Paul will talk more about this, that that process of numbering and sequencing will come next after, and so probably we'll look at that at the next meeting. But we'll start the process just to understand what it will entail, just so it's, you can start to think about it. But the focus today will be on the map itself, just to make sure that we're clear on what map you'd like to move forward with, if there's one tonight that you wanna move forward with. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Paul Mitchell on Zoom. All right?
Thank you very much, and thanks for having me here today. This is what we've discussed before is kind of one of the most important meetings in the process because the idea with today's meeting is to consider a map that you will take to the fifth hearing. At that fifth hearing, hopefully, you've designated one map that is being made available to the public and, and has been posted for seven days, that you'll be adopting as your district map going forward until the redistricting in 2031. And as this fourth meeting goes forward, we wanna make sure that any questions that you have or questions that the public has raised have been addressed. And as was also mentioned, we're gonna kind of put a bow on this issue of the numbering of the districts and talk about it a little bit, although we will do that actual part of the process at the end. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and walk through this presentation. It'll be pretty quick. And then I'm here to answer any questions, and if necessary, like we've done before, I can go ahead and, and, you know, discuss any potential changes. I can even go in and use your public mapping tool to show what changes would require in terms of population or balancing districts. So the things I'll cover are, first off, traditional districting, redistricting principles. I'll cover those real quickly. Look at the draft maps. And then go over what we've done as a hearing schedule so far. Talk about numbering and sequencing and what's next. So if somebody is coming to this process today, maybe they saw an article in the newspaper about it, maybe they're watching online, and they're not familiar with the districting process. I did a very lengthy, maybe hour-long, 45-minute-long presentation at our first hearing. And on the City of Sonoma website, the transition to districted elections section, you can actually find that presentation and find the video of that hearing so that you could get a more thorough discussion of the process. But the basics are that districts, when we create districts, we want them to be equally sized, both so that people have equal access to representation, meaning that they each have the same amount of people in the district, so they each have the same similar voices that are going to the city council. And also that they have equal voting power, meaning that each council member is elected by roughly the same number of residents in their district. In order to determine equal size, we go based on the most recent decennial census and the whole population number for that. Districts need to be contiguous, meaning that they need to be whole parts. Now, the City of Sonoma has what's called islands, which are areas outside of the city, the main body of the city, that are non-contiguous to the city. In those cases, we want those little islands to be in the most adjacent nearest district. We wanna maintain communities of interest, and this is essentially the most important part of the process and something we'll talk about a lot today, and something that's been talked about a lot in the discussion of these districts. And the idea is that if there is a community of interest in the city, let's say a downtown community of interest, or a fire zone community of interest, or a mobile home community of interest, or a community of interest around a, an area that has businesses, and they're really concerned about what's gonna happen with that kind of a business district. In those cases, we don't wanna draw districts that take that community of interest and split them up into multiple seats, meaning that their attention is divided among multiple council members. We wanna draw districts that kind of encapsulate that community of interest and make sure that that community knows that they have a council member that they can take their issues to, who will be, you know, really receptive and almost obligated to focus on their concerns because those are the residents that help elect them. Those communities of interest are generated both by council members talking about the city and also by members of the public testifying or submitting maps to discuss those communities of interest. Now, the next criteria is one of the most basic criterias, that district lines are easily identifiable, that kind of makes sense. They follow natural boundaries, they follow major streets or roads or rivers. And they're easily understood and identifiable by voters, that they don't look at the map and say, you know, what are these districts? They make no sense. That they look at the map and they're like, oh, okay, the people that I'm in a district that with, that makes sense. And this district line follows a creek or a major road, so that makes sense. And so it's easier for people to understand what district they're in. You don't wanna have districts where everybody in the city is like, I have no idea what district I'm in, cuz all those districts look like, you know, a bunch of octopuses doing a dance. These districts instead will look like something that makes sense to people. And then finally, districts should be compact. And there are a lot of definitional things about what compactness is around the country. In California, we have a unique criteria in that a district is compact if it's not bypassing a nearby population to go get a faraway population. And what that means is keep populations that are near each other, also in the districts near each other. Don't take a line and just go whizzing around a nearby population out to go get some faraway population somewhere else. Let's try to create districts that are more compact. Now, one of the things that was discussed in the last hearing, and I said I'd come back with some data, was the idea that the mobile home park community as a community of interest could be in potential maps, either in one or two districts. And I think, just coincidentally, I said in the meeting, it's possible that in District 1, 36% of the district is mobile home park. And it turns out that that actually is the percent of District 1 in Draft Plan A that is, that, that yellow district on the west side, 36% of the residents are residents of those mobile home parks as defined by the census blocks in those areas. And that is because we have a northern, northwestern mobile home park, and then we have a southwestern mobile home park. Now, in this other plan, Draft Plan B, we have districts that are more compact, more square-like. You have a very clear line separating the two. And in these, you have the northern mobile home park in this brown-colored district, and the southern mobile home park in this yellow-colored district. And what turns out is that District 1 is, 26% of that population is in the, that yellow district, 26% of the population is mobile home park residents. And in the brown district, 9.2% of the population is mobile home park residents. The question that was raised, and the way that I put it in context in the last meeting was, if you were to have the yellow district be some lower number, like 26% of the district being mobile home park residents, is that sufficiently making it so that the character of that district will be driven or influenced by that mobile home park community? Cuz that's the idea of districting, is that you wanna keep communities of interest together so that they can effectuate outcomes in terms of elections and also be effective in being able to advocate for themselves at the city council. Is 26% of that community of, of that district being from the mobile home parks, is that sufficient? Or is it more beneficial to the mobile home park to be in a district where it's 36% of residents? And what is the distinguishing factor? Now, I wish I had a, a numerical number to tell you that, you know, this is a good percentage and this is not a good percentage. It's not that simple, but it's up to you as the council members, and you're the ones that are, are emboldened to make this choice, whether or not that is sufficient. So that's just something I wanted to put out there in terms of the numbers as you discuss this. Now, Draft Plan B is the one that we have been discussing, and it's the one that, it has a 5.2% deviation, so it's within that 10% equal population. It is similar to two plan maps that were submitted by the public, so that's how it was created, by taking this map 278427, which is on the Districter site, and 27860, and making that into a plan that essentially balanced those ideas. It keeps communities of, from the mobile home communities in the southwest intact. The red is on the west side of the city, and the historic plaza area are intact. And then it uses the creek to separate districts 2 and 3 here in the red and green districts. So there are a lot of elements of this map that are similar to themes in maps that we've seen from other public submissions. Now, when we look at this districting, and we'll go over the sequencing in a moment, this idea of this plan would be that the even-numbered districts would come up in 2026, and odd-numbered districts would come up in 2028. Now, when we look at the data, and this is with every public submission and every draft map, we have this data, you can see this total plan deviation in the top table. This is the 2020 census data. And the lower table, the citizen voting age population, you can see the composition of each district in terms of what you consider eligible voters. B2 is this, a modified version of this map. It has a very small modification. If you see Draft B2 here, look up here in this corner where 4 and 5 connect. And you'll see this green district. That's, the green is Draft B, and this new darker line is Draft B2. So the difference between these two maps is just that. Other than that, the maps are identical. The reason we weren't able to make a larger change was because of the need to balance population. That in making more of a change, or more significant of a change, you end up having to modify a lot of districts. Now, in order to show how that works, we created some visualizations. Both of these are maps that are in the Works in Progress folder on the Districter page. Both of these maps that I'm gonna show you are maps that you could elevate for consideration at the future hearing. But let me go ahead and show these. The issue that we're having is this one census block. It's making it hard for us to draw a straight line up to the city boundary. So we can do some swaps, and I'm gonna show what these look like. Visualization number one takes the Draft Plan B, and if we were to take that area and put it all in District 5, if you look at this, keep your eye here on the brown district. We can take this area of 5 and move it all in there so that it creates a compact district. But when you do that, this district becomes overpopulated, so you have to take from it. So we take this yellow district and watch this yellow district and brown district boundary, and watch it pop up. So it moves up to take away extra population from 5, so now 5's balanced, but now 1 would be overpopulated. So if we look here between 2 and 1, 2 has to come across. And now 2 comes across in order to balance 2 and 1, but then 2 would be overpopulated, so we have to take this boundary that's the creek and move over in order to make 2 balanced. And then in order to make 3 balanced, we have to make a change over here on the east side. You can see that there's this movement that's happening. Every district's being adjusted because you wanna make this one change. There's a different way to do this. In doing this one, this district number 1, I came up this way, but if, let me see. So in this first visualization, you make the swaps while, in, in doing so, 1 stays down here instead of going up to the mobile home park. In the second visualization, we do it, and it's essentially the same, but we have the District 1 come up to the mobile home park. So we've created these two visualizations. If we look at them, this is the first one I showed, where we are keeping the north-south relationship of these western districts. And in this visualization number 2, we are taking this district here all the way up to the other mobile home parks. So we're essentially having both the mobile home parks be in the same district. These more significant changes that essentially touch every district on the map are a function of the size of the population in this one census block. And there's not a way to more cleanly address this without making these larger changes. And again, if that was confusing, which I can totally understand it being confusing, I can go into Districter and look at Draft Plan B or Draft Plan B2, and do this all by hand to show how it works. Now, as I mentioned, we're at our fourth hearing, the one in bold here on March 19th. We've had these other three hearings, two of them before we ever drew maps, the last hearing where we introduced the maps for the first time. And then the final hearing here on April 2nd is the one where we would do the adoption of the maps and the sequencing. So before we go into maybe looking at potential changes to maps or further discussions of map, let me discuss the sequencing so that we understand what we're gonna be doing at the next meeting. So we need to, this needs to be, sorry, we were a little bit unsure as to which one was gonna happen. So we're gonna have three districts coming up in 2026, and two districts coming up in 2028. When we think about numbering, the easiest thing to do is to follow essentially what the county supervisors do, which is that they have the odd-numbered districts come up one year, and then they have even-numbered districts come up the next year. So that's the way that they format their elections. That's the way most counties do it. They like to have the odds up one year and the evens up the other. And given that you have two seats up in 2026, we would have those seats up in 2026, and then there are three seats up in 2026, and then two seats up in 2028. We will do that portion of the process at the next hearing, and the way to think about it is, when we come to the next hearing, after we've come to a conclusion on which map is gonna be selected, we can look at the map, essentially taking the numbers off the map, and reassigning the numbers of each district based on when we want that geographic area to come up in the next election. So we can discuss that in more detail if you'd like. Or we can just kind of park this idea and discuss it in more detail at the next meeting when we actually have to do it. So again, the process that we've done is to receive at the last hearing some draft maps. We identified some preferred plans, suggest possible changes, and then if there's direction on any new maps, we can go ahead and, and do that. In fact, at this hearing, I would suggest if there's direction, that we actually do some live line drawing here. The, this iterative process means that every decision you're making on the map, every move along the line is being discussed in open session for the public to see and for us to be able to have, you know, this documenting of the rationale for each of these changes that we make. And that helps create a more transparent process and helps ensure for the public that they understand why this, why this final map you adopt was adopted and what decisions went into that process. So with that, I'm happy to discuss any of these maps or take any questions.
Yeah, at this time, we're gonna be taking questions from the council. Does anybody have any questions? And I'll give you a moment, cuz it looks like your brains are turning. No? Are you good? Jack, do you have any questions?
Uh, my question, the difference between the B and the B2, that is in the population. The, what is the difference about the percentage I get in the C? B and the B2. That is additional one included. Oh, okay, okay, too small. Uh, reduced by 3%.
Through the, through the chair, is, are you referring to the visual, Mr. Ding, are you referring to the visualizations 2? Which page are you referring to?
Oh, I did, uh, the 11 and 11 and the 6.
The slides?
Yeah.
Slide 11 and 6, not page.
Slides.
Slide, yeah.
So this shows this one area, what's essentially happening in this plan is that District 4 is getting a little bit smaller, and District 5 is getting a little bit bigger. And the deviation of your total plan, the 9.6 total plan deviation, is literally the difference between these two districts. Because 4 becomes the most underpopulated district, and 5 becomes the most overpopulated district. And that's what creates the 9.6% deviation. We literally couldn't move 10 people after having made this change without exceeding the 10% total plan deviation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna take it to comments from the public at this time on this agenda item. All right, seeing no comments from the public, we'll come back to council and in regards to any comments or, and discussion. Yes, Councilwoman Low.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to Redistricting Partners for doing this work. It's, it's really well done. I, I'm thinking, I mean, I brought up the last meeting that in, in the Draft B, not to cut out the, the, the little piece of the neighborhood off Fifth Street West in the northern part, that it would just seem very awkward to those, those people. And I think that even though it required some moving around of the other pieces, what happened as a sort of a nice result perhaps, is that you ended up with the mobile home parks all in what is now Slide 18, Area 1. And I think that's, I think that makes sense. And I think that the new area, in this case numbered 5, feels like a, a population that, you know, moves with one another there. So I guess, I would say that that particular map is the closest to what I think captures the communities in Sonoma in terms of the natural neighborhoods that, that I think of. So I just wanted to say I'm rather partial to that particular one. Thank you.
Councilmember Gurney.
Through the chair, and just for clarification, you're talking about Visualization 2, Slide 18, okay? I too actually like the idea that the manufactured home communities would be represented collectively. They do have unique issues within their communities, and I think to have them represented collectively is a good approach.
Councilmember Wellender.
Through the mayor.
Vice Mayor Wellender.
Yeah, I too agree. I think that one of the comments made early on was this idea that we need to maintain communities of interest. And I was puzzled at the beginning to think, do we have any other than the town of Sonoma as being one community? So truly, the manufactured home residents are unique, and I think it would be best if, if we indeed consolidate and, and keep them together.
I think the other comment I have is I also like the idea of having, you know, the vast majority of the districts, people that are living in fire hazard areas or very high fire hazard area, are between two different districts so that we have that. There's a little bit of that with the mobile home park, but I don't think that that's enough to really change that, that that would be something that is, would be important to have those communities have interests aligned together in the districts. So at this point, we're just looking at the maps. Do, any other comments on the map? I, I also like visualization 2. I think that that, that meets many of the concerns that we've been looking at and were brought up at the last meeting. Do we, you, do you have one more comment? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm just trying to look. It's not real clear on the screen, but under Visualization number 2, I believe in order to balance things out, at one time, we were looking at not using Broadway as the delineator. But we're gonna slip to the east and pick it up over to Nathanson Creek because it was at least expressed then. it up over to Nathanson Creek because it was at least expressed then that high probability that there's not much difference in interest on one side of Broadway versus the other. But I believe you, again, have used Broadway to differentiate between two and three, and you did that just to balance the numbers?
Yeah, so the difference is really about 100 people moving into the yellow, into District Two, the green district on this map, if you go to the creek. And 100 people might not sound like a lot, but what it ends up doing is making three underpopulated too much and two overpopulated too much so that your total plan deviation goes to around 14%.
Which we do know, yes. Councilmember Low.
Yeah, and, and while it would have been nice to have the creek, I think it was something felt good about that, I think that in terms of people's understanding, in terms of what district they're in, a lot of people, which is why I brought up Napa Street as a dividing line, people do use those streets, you know, I'm on the east side of Broadway, I'm the west side of Broadway, I'm north of Napa, I'm south of Napa. I think that will help people understand better what district they live in, and I think that's really important. So, and, and, you know, as the Vice Mayor has brought up numerous times, this is all, we're all one Sonoma, we're going to care about both sides of Broadway, we're going to care about both sides of Napa, we're going to care about all of these things equally. But this is just in terms of allowing people to understand what their, what their voting area is, and, you know, that, that to me is, is handy in that respect.
And I would say if, I, I think I'm correct when I'm looking at the map, is it a good portion, because I want to look and see the streets, but a good portion of three on the east side of Broadway are the schools, which I think, I actually do think that to me it makes more, Broadway makes a more natural dividing line. It just, you know, for me, it feels like there is a difference from one side of Broadway to the other, that that would make it much more understandable for folks. And I think the only thing we're looking at here is there's that one little area that is the very west section of four, the little arrow, or what you would call it, that goes out, that, you know, kind of, that there's that, that section up there where people would be in four versus five. But once again...
Are you talking about right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that has no people, so we can move that easily.
Oh, thank you. I was thinking it didn't, but so good, thanks for confirming for me that there's no people there. Good. And the only other comment I would make is I do believe that as we're looking at this, yes, I think with this council, we all think of one Sonoma, but we don't know what future councils are going to look like and what their opinion's going to be about that. So I think we have to constantly think about what is best for the, you know, 20, 30 years down the road, not just today. But even with that, so can we, I, I want to see if we have, if there, are there any other comments about the map? Because then I think we can move on to a little bit of direction around the numbering. Yes?
Can I just verify, Mayor, you brought up a point about the, the section that does not have any population. If we bring back a map that has that cleaned up and straightened out, is that what I'm hearing? There's consensus for that? Okay, just want to clarify.
Yeah, if I could, I can show on Districtor that I'm going to save this plan, and I just need to figure out if we want to call this like B three. If so, then I can go ahead and save that on the Districtor site, and then we can convert that to a PDF and send to the staff tonight or tomorrow morning so that it can be posted on the website. And this is what it looks like in Districtor with that little fix up there in the magenta, it's on this map, it's in the magenta. And with these changes, I'm just going to go ahead and play, change this.
Yeah, and make it B three.
Save it as Draft Map, Draft Map B three.
And Councilmember Gurney has another question or comment.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, isn't there one residence on that little piece of land?
Let me look. It was in the green. Oh, it looks like there might be one, right? Let's see, it goes from, it doesn't affect the map suddenly, so it goes 2210, 2215, so there's five people, very good eye. But it doesn't change the deviation negatively, it doesn't affect the deviation, so it can be done without having any impact on the map.
All right. Good.
Visually, much better. I like that. So I wanted to move on to the numbering, and I actually do have one question in regards to the transition around the numbering, is my, because I am in, John and I are in three, and Sandra is in... We're not?
It, we can hold off on the discussion of what members are in which districts until after you have come to the next meeting, you're about to adopt the map, so that, because we can't consider incumbents as we're drawing the maps.
Right.
Even though it feels like we're kind of at the end of that process, it's probably best to separate out the decision you're going to make at your next hearing on the final plan from who lives where. And then at that meeting, kind of open the books and we talk about which number, who goes into what districts, or when the elections are going to be held.
Okay, so once the map is decided, then we can do that?
Yeah, then we can do that, and we can think about, we can think about how, the best way to move forward so that, you know, we don't have people in seats that are, you know, they don't have a district or something like that. So we will try to work it so that the electorate's decision at the last two elections is seen through to the extent that we can.
Great. So at this point then, I am going to call for a motion regarding this map. Is that the correct thing to do at this point?
Yeah, I think, I think what we need is direction.
Or just direction. Yeah, because on the, I thought it was just direction, but it says...
We'll bring it back.
Okay.
Well, that'll be the map that's posted and that will be in the draft ordinance to you, along with recommendations on numbering and sequencing based on what we've heard.
Okay.
We'll come back with a draft ordinance for introduction at the next meeting, and that ordinance will adopt presumably this map, B three, and when we determine the sequencing, we'll add that into the text of the ordinance for introduction, which obviously will take two readings, so it'll come back.
And in the interim, it'll be posted and public will have a chance to comment on it if there's any further need.
The map will need to be posted for seven days in advance, yeah.
Perfect. All right, so I will then close this. Yes, one more comment.
Just, just a, well, a question really. In, in, you saw, you showed the example regarding it's what the county does in terms of odds and evens. Are there examples of people that do one, two, three, and then four, five? Are there examples of that?
Yeah, of course. There are examples of cities doing A, B, C, D, E, F, as their council, putting them as letters or other things like that. The, the thing that we can do is we can take the map that we, that you are going to adopt and literally just renumber the districts on the map itself, so we don't have to worry about people saying, well, I have to be in this even or odd, they can just renumber the districts on the map itself. We'll just basically clear off the numbers on the districts and we can renumber it at the last hearing.
Yeah, the numbers don't need to go counterclockwise.
Right, I just want, and I, I knew that, I just wanted to say that question out loud so that people aren't fixated on the fact that it, they have to be somehow in order and it has to be even odd, that there are other ways to do it, and we can look at that next time.
Yeah, and we could just have our favorite numbers. No, that was a joke. All right, moving on. Okay, so I am at this time, I'm seeing no additional comment, going to close this public hearing. All right, and now we are going to move back to what is generally what we start with at the beginning of our meeting, and we are going to move on to comments from the public. And this is a moment when people can comment from the public on items that are not on the agenda, and we can take 10 comments.
Hello, my name is Janet Boyle, I live on Brazil Street, and I was in front of, of the Planning Commission in the last month, expressing some concerns about the land use changes that are being proposed for the Sebastiani property. So not too surprising, that's why I'm here tonight. And since then, my concerns have only been heightened, and there are several reasons for my growing concerns, but I'll limit my comments to just a couple due to this ticking clock here. First, my concerns have, my concern have increased greatly due to the recent update from CAL FIRE that increased the fire danger to high risk. So we've talked about it several times, about moving, you know, a population and, that would bring traffic and congestion over to that parcel, you know, the, the risk that it would have during evacuations. We've had many people that come up to the podium and talk, they were, they're on Cherokee or on Level Valley, expressing similar concerns. So that increased congestion or potential traffic and congestion at the Sebastiani property is very concerning to me. Second, as a neighbor pointed out in the, in, I think it was the Planning Commission meeting, so you guys, I don't think you've heard this, but the four or five, this was, this was astounding to me, I only have 51 seconds. The four or five parcels that currently make up the Sebastiani property encompass about 22 acres, as I understand, and as far as I know, that's the largest single property in the city of Sonoma, and developing that into something other than what it is currently used for would great, could greatly alter the gravitational pull of the entire city, meaning that the square could become secondary, all the businesses in the square could become secondary, all the restaurants, all the tourism, because that's twice the size, the squares, I understand it, is the entire square, it's only 12 acres. And eight of that is the park. So it literally could change, the center of the city would be Fourth and Spain, or Fourth and Level Valley, depending on how you're looking at. Okay, but please note that I am supportive of changing the land use for the one parcel on East Spain that is designated currently as wine production, that currently has housing units on it, so I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but I'm okay with that certainly. And as I have asked many times, my questions still remain the same, which is why must we consider changing the land use for these parcels at all, like any other property owner? When I bought my house, I accepted the zoning and land use restrictions on my property, so why are we considering changing it for these parcels? Da, 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 okay. And then, just real quick, ah, yes, so in tonight's, there was a section in tonight's section in, in the documentation, it was 61 pages, I'm not sure I got, I didn't get through it all, but it made a comment about the land use being published by the first of April. Is that, are we really going to publish the land use changes in the next 12 calendar days? It says in there that the land, it must be published the first, the first day of April. It's quoted in there, I, I should have written down the page number, but... Yeah. Let me just say, thank you for your service, and I'm, we really are grateful of your service.
Good evening, my name is Charles Zipkin, I live on San Lorenzo Court, which is basically puts Sebastiani in my backyard, I also have some concerns about it, but first of all, I understand that you're going to discuss the, the land use, the general plan tonight, you're not going to discuss the plan, you're going to discuss your report to the state about how far you've come on the plan, and I think that's great, I think you're doing great work. My concern is that throughout all of this, I don't think anybody has heard why anybody wants to change that zoning, besides the Foley Company. We understand why they might want to do it, for financial reasons, but all of a sudden there's a new land use zoning called Sonoma Mixed Use, which nobody really understands, it's brand new, and I don't think anybody has ever explained to the public why you want to do that, besides just capitulating and giving the Foley Company what they want. They bought a winery and now they don't want a winery. Okay, tough. I mean, why are we changing that when you're going to change the whole nature of this community? And I remember, I remember something that I heard during Vietnam, those people my age will remember this, that it became necessary to destroy the village in order to save it, and you may be doing the same thing if we turn what pays right now as a residential area into a venue. And I think that would be a mistake, I think that would change the culture of the city negatively, and I don't think you would attract more people if you do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Flanagan, I live on East Spain, and I too am here to talk about Sebastiani. I was struck today in reading the update on the general plan that there are a number of things here that I think are applicable to this discussion. In that, in, in the materials in, in the packet today, it notes that as a community, we say we want development that respects the availability of natural resources and enhances the scale, character, and natural setting of the community. The community's history and its role as a cultural center are enhanced through careful preservation of historic sites, and open space and agricultural lands are protected both in and around the city. The Sebastiani site is surrounded by low-density housing and agriculture. On the property are numerous historic elements, including one of the oldest vineyards in the state and a state-designated landmark. While I'm encouraged by the developers' assertions that they want to protect these things, I think the city should be taking a more assertive approach to ensure that protections happen. And to do this, I think taking a more surgical, precise approach might offer a path forward that aligns with the community's concerns, the city's stated vision, and what the developers would like to do. For instance, keep the site as a multi-zone property, keep those areas designated currently as agricultural use to just be agriculture, address the other portion in a more narrowly-defined way as to what is allowed on the property. I think this might be a better path forward, and as you all consider what this community is envisioned to be over the next 20 years, that we preserve what's made it special to date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to make a public comment on, regarding something that is not on tonight's agenda? And from the chair, can we clarify the date if there is a, an April 10th deadline? I don't think there is.
I believe the reference was to April 1st deadline, that the report that is going to be reported out to you tonight on the general plan update is due to the state.
Right.
That is due on April 1st, and Jennifer can expand more on that as, during her presentation.
Yeah, so that's separate. People get confused about the general plan and, and the update, the general plan. Yeah, all right, so at this point then, I am going to close public comment, and then we are going to move on to meeting dedications? Do we have any meeting dedications this evening? No meeting dedications, then we're going to move on to item number four, council members' reports and comments. Yes, Councilmember Gurney.
Well, let's see, on Thursday, the 13th of March, the Tourism Improvement District met. Unfortunately, there was not a quorum, so they could not conduct business, however, they did receive a presentation from the consultants that are working with them and promoting tourism in the city of Sonoma, but nothing to report on that. And on Friday, the 14th of March, we dedicated the France Street Bridge to Larry Murphy in his honor, and it has a lovely plaque explaining who Larry was and what he brought to the community. And it was very well attended, very well done, and again, compliments to the staff and for the work they did, and particularly Sarah for the work, organization work that she did, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, yes, Vice Mayor Wellander.
Thank you. Two items, they are related. On the 12th of March, I had the opportunity to participate in what I would call a strategic meeting of the Sonoma Valley Partners Fighting Homelessness. And in essence, it was a case to, again, have a conversation as far as where we are, where are we, what opportunities do we have, where do we need to make improvement? And so, again, there's a lot of interest, and it's just now a matter of time and implementation. Second, today there was a meeting by, again, associated with the homeless, it was a group called By Names List, which is where we, the city as well as the county and others, have a chance to listen to those that are actively involved with the valley, in terms of where these residents might be, where these individuals might be, what's being done, have there been any reported problems? If not, how are we doing on the rehousing? So again, that was a very informative meeting. And lastly, a little bit of a sidebar, I am going to be making a public announcement, news announcement, was that P I? No, whatever. The county is embarking, well, being led by our supervisor Rebecca Hermosillo, on a kind of an exciting art project that's going to take place at the intersection of 121 and 116. and 116 at the Roundabout. And so, the goal is that there's going to be, at some point in the rather distant future, maybe two years, there's going to be an iconic piece of sculpture that we're going to be able to say, "That says Sonoma Valley." And there is a community meeting for an opportunity to gain, to give some thoughts and suggestions on what that piece of art should represent. So it's Aug., April 1st, at the Anabo Winery, and it's from just 5 to 6, and everyone is invited. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Through the chair, if I may, have we asked the, our Cultural and Fine Arts Commission to weigh in on, on this at all, or are they, are they going to be there?
It's my understanding that the chair is actually involved on the selection committee, and is actually co-chairing the selection committee, so there is good representation.
Fantastic, because we have such a good commission.
We do.
Yes. Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Monday, in March 17, I was attending Sonoma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and in the meeting, and all the members were present, and we passed 2025 and 2026 budget preliminary adoption. And the, because our, in the budget, it's not very big, just only in the $2 million, and majorly based on our, you know, the, the, the grants from the state, from the Water Resource Department. So the, we looked at the, the budget, and the income, and expenses, almost in a match rate, so now we got it approved. Another thing is, we make an adjustment for the contract agreement with the consulting company, West Used, yeah, we just make it a little bit an adjustment, because, and we got an additional grant from the state. So in order to, and to meet the requirement, we need to purchase some of the, certain software and tools to match the, to meet the requirements. That is all my report, thank you so much.
Thank you all. So I have, I will do my report, and then I have another request for the council, but so, I attended the Civic Well Policies Conference on, from August 13th through the 15th at Yosemite, and it snowed, and it took me nine hours to get there, but we won't talk about that. Anyway, so it, what is, so Civic Well is a nonprofit supporting sustainable solutions and the leaders and communities that implement them. It was a great conference. It was both very, it was wonderful to be there with other cities and find out how they're implementing different sustainability work. It was also quite, I wouldn't say I walked away from it excited about the world of natural resources and climate, I would say that there was a lot of information that was quite dire. So we had insights from federal agency leaders, for example, we had the former Associate Administrator from FEMA was there, we had a session on state and local collaboration, a session on safeguarding house and wildlands amidst, amidst fire risk, and we had a very interesting presentation by David Jones of CLE, who was a previous insurance, our insurance representative in California, and talking about insurance uncertainty. So that was probably one of the most difficult presentations to be able to sit through, and something certainly, which is of great interest to all of us now, with the new maps that are coming out. We also, there was a section on water innovations, local initiatives, and then we had keynotes, speeches from Betty Yee, former California State Controller, Wade Crawford, who is the Secretary of California Natural Resources. So that's my report for, for this, but I do have a request, and so, one of the things that is happening, and I have had conversations with this, about with our city manager, is in response to the current U.S.'s administration activities in regards to, you know, agencies, reducing funding of, of many of our agencies, that we're receiving numerous requests, that the stacks of requests that we're getting are significant, so requests for letters to the state, to U.S. representatives, and requests for resolutions, for example, cuts to Medicaid, just as an example of how some of these affect us, because I do want to start with that, because we like to, at City Council here, focus on issues that are related to the city specifically, but certainly cuts to Medicaid, HUD, EPA, could directly affect services to our residents, and, you know, the, the services they receive, and then also, then affect our current budget. So especially if you think of homelessness, and you think of Medicaid, and you think of our hospital, and what services could go away for our, you know, healthcare services, or also in regards to HUD for housing. If there's not, if rental assistance goes away, then what that means for our populations that currently receive that rental assistance. So it could increase our issues around housing. So what I'm requesting is that we actually give, direct our city manager to be able to review these letters, resolutions, and advocacy requests, and to bring those to the council that are directly related to issues affecting Sonoma residents, Sonoma are nonprofit partners, or Sonoma vulnerable communities, and that he would also be communicating with local representatives to prioritize those affecting our city and our district. So what I'm actually, the request is not, is to actually enable city staff to do less work, to be able to have direction to say, these are ones that we, we, because it will take resources, if there's letters that we would like to send from city council, or if there's a resolution that we would like to adopt, that this allows them to kind of clean things up and prioritize, work with our county representatives and our state representatives to get information from them as, in regards to what are the things that they really need from us to prioritize. So it's kind of getting rid of that stack, and not having, you know, 20 resolutions or 30 resolutions come before this council, or have, you know, the public coming before the council for us to address the demand. Does that make sense, or does that, you look maybe more confused? Yes?
I, I mean, I, I listened to this, and it, it seems like more work, not less. Because even if there were two of those resolutions, they're going to take, you know, a bit of drafting. You know, clearly, we've heard concerns regarding funding. We, we belong to organizations that do a lot of the legwork for us, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at other avenues, but, you know, the resolutions that have come forward, that have asked us to opine on certain things, usually come forward from the League of Cities, or CAL Cities, as they're known now, perhaps through, you know, our representatives, you know, Congressman Thompson, or Supervisor Hermosillo. And I think that, you know, if we just sort of open it up, I mean, it's going to be a lot to ask of our staff to go through and decide which of these. I mean, today, there was an announcement about, you know, formally closing the Office of Education. Many of you know, I mean, I taught at Sonoma Valley High School, I served on the school board with Mr. Hammett, and that's a huge concern, but we're not the school district. And yet, I care about it, obviously, deeply. And, but if we start, and it will affect, you know, people in Sonoma, it'll affect kids in Sonoma. So, you know, but if we open that door, it's, it's going to be, it's going to go wide open. And so, I think that we should rely on our congressional representative to let us know of the things that are specific to Sonoma, that we, that he needs help, needs our support, or so forth, and, and also through the League of Cities. But, I just think turning over, I mean, I know what my email looks like, because I'm very involved in these issues in my other life, and I, I, I must get 40 requests a day on some, on some issue or other, and I just think it's a lot to ask of staff. I'm not saying it isn't important, I'm not saying I wouldn't personally stick my neck out on any of those issues, because I will, but I think I should, I will do that in my other life, and not burden the, the staff here to decide which ones we should take up. Because no matter which one we take up, we're, what we're really doing is inviting a whole lot of controversy, and over things that may or may not be in our control. So, anyway, that's my concern, is we're actually not lowering the workload, we're increasing it, and that we should narrow it to the recommendations from our local officials and the California and the League of Cities staff.
As to the requests, I would like to say a thank you to the Mayor Rivers and the city manager, David Guin, because in the last, on Friday, I got a request from the League of the city, CAL Cities, you know, the quest for a Senate bill, 346, that is important to us, that is the number one, and a major income for us, because I'm the commissioner for the revenue and the taxation committee. So the, our executive director contacted me, if not possible, and let out in the city to support. So now, at the first time, I contacted Patricia and David, and we got it through yesterday, you sent over a strong support, yes, and we, I hope that we can do more, some of the letters, or resolutions, or, yeah, go ahead.
If I may, just respond to that. I think that's difference, is supporting a bill, you know, I think, obviously, if there's a bill, and I'm familiar with that one, that brings us revenue, or something like that, or, or gets rid of a restriction, as some of us would like to see, then, yeah, of course, I mean, but these are coming from the League of Cities, they're not just coming from, you know, wherever.
And I think the point is actually, if I may, oh, I'm going to actually, no, let's, let's...
Madam Mayor, if I may, this is, this is council member communications and comments, so there's nothing agendized to take action on, or give direction on. It, you know, I think once we get past two or three comments, it starts to fall into the...
All right, and then, then maybe we can bring it back to the agenda.
I think this is something that, that the city manager can speak with, with you about, I mean, you guys are the ones that formulate the agendas, so that's something that you can discuss.
Yeah, we can, I'm happy to bring it back to the agenda and talk about it again, because this did come from our discussion of how do we deal with this, so it wasn't as if...
Yeah, based on how, how in-depth this is going to be, it sounds like it's a good conversation, I think I can bring this back, based on what I'm hearing now, I'm happy to work with you on that, bring it back.
Great, great. Thank you very much. I will say though, the other comment is, I did make a call and send a text to Christopher Cabaldan's office on behalf of SB 346, in support, that we would be in support of that, because it actually does bring, affect, does affect our budget, and for those in the public that don't, don't understand what it is, it's actually a method for us to be able to better track TOT taxes that we get from Airbnb and VRVO. And so it just makes us able to be able to better detect whether or not there's, there's activity going on that we don't know about, and then we collect the money. So, thank you. All right, moving on. Thank you, City Attorney Redeman. Appreciate that. All right, now I'm going to move on to city manager comments.
Okay, I'll just keep this short, just as a reminder, the fire maps that have been talked about tonight are available on our website at sonomacity.org. We will be bringing that to the council for adoption in probably the April-May timeframe. And, also just as a reminder, tomorrow, March 20th, is the call day reception, at 6:30, the Vintage House, for Kathy Wiki, Kathy Wiki, Wicco Wiki, thank you. So we're excited for that as well, and I thank you to staff for pulling that together as well, it's going to be a great event, so, and that's all I've got.
All right. Any, do we have any information or, from our city attorney?
No report.
No report, great. Moving on to presentations. So actually, what I am going to do is, oh yes, first, is the proclamation designating the week of March 16th to the 22nd, 2025, as National Surveyor Week in the city of Sonoma. And I have a resolution here, but we have chapter members Monica Wingate and Dominic Sanfilippo, that I think are here to receive the proclamation, but I'm going to do...
On behalf of them, it's Phil Danskin.
Oh, Phil Danskin, okay, well, I'll just do a quick reading of the proclamation. This is, "Whereas surveying has been an indispensable," and there's a lot of good information of this history in this proclamation, "An indispensable pillar in the development of human environments throughout recorded history, surveying is an essential requirement in the planning and execution of nearly all forms of construction, including in the fields of transport, building, and construction, communications, mapping, and the delineation of legal boundaries for land ownership, and whereas surveyors employ principles from engineering, physics, mathematics, astronomy, law, and history to achieve their objectives, and whereas from the earliest days of the United States colonial history, surveyors have been esteemed community leaders, statesmen, influential citizens, and arbiters of cultural norms. Notable figures among them include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, Lewis and Clark, Daniel Boone, and Henry David Thoreau, among numerous others. Whereas today, surveyors utilize advanced techniques and sophisticated equipment such as satellite-born remote sensing devices, and automated positioning, measuring, recording, and plotting tools to deliver critical services. And whereas the designation of March 16th through the 22nd, 2025, as National Surveyors Week stands as a fitting tribute to the dedication and contribution of all surveyors, now therefore be it resolved that I, Patricia Faravivas, Mayor of the city of Sonoma, along with the entire city council, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of March 19th through 22nd, 2025, I think that's 16, I think that was a typo, as National Surveyors Week in the city of Sonoma, recognizing and celebrating the invaluable role of surveyors in shaping our communities and advancing our society." Thank you to all of the surveyors. Would you like to come forward and say a few words?
We'll make it real short, because you guys have a lot to do. But, a couple of years ago, I came and brought you some stakes, little survey stakes, and passed those around.
Oh, I, oh, stakes, survey stakes, yeah.
The thing I could say is, Mount Rushmore, there's three surveyors and the other guy. But, some of the stuff you see, surveyors walking around with a pole, and on top of that pole, there might be a, what looks like a reflector, like a piece of glass, that, that is what we measure to using infrared or laser. And just to let you know how things have advanced, from Apollo, and the Russians have five of these, it's between 18 inches and 48 inches of these reflectors up on the moon. And they are, the scientists are measuring, just like we do down here on Earth, around properties, et cetera, they're doing it to the moon, so it's, and science is just going...
They're doing land use there, too.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, that's it. Thank you very much for the honor, the acknowledgement, I should say.
Yes, well, hang on, we can take a photo.
Okay, okay, all right.
And now, for our second presentation this evening, we have a presentation by Sonoma Water on the fiscal year 2526, Proposed Budget and Rates and Water Transition Systems. Thank you, and I'm going to hand this over to our Public Works Director.
And thank you, and good evening, Mayor Faravivas and council members. Tonight, as a follow-up to the Sonoma Water CAP presentation, we have two finance managers from Sonoma Water tonight, Lynn Roselli and Jake Spalding, and like the mayor said, they will give a presentation on the 2526 financials.
As Mike just said, my name's Jake Spalding, I'm the finance...
I'm the finance manager with Sonoma Water. And I'm here with Lynn Roselli, our Financial Services Division Manager. Um, so we are going to give you a really brief overview of our 2526 proposed budget and rates for the water transmission system. And then we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, so each year we develop a, a budget that meets the water transmission systems, operations, maintenance, capital, as well as regulatory demands. Um, and you know, as our system ages, similar to the city's water system, you know, gets older, we, we have additional maintenance needs and additional capital needs to replace this aging infrastructure. Um, you know, it's really important to keep doing this so that we can continue to operate this 24/7 for all of our benefit. Um, so real quick, a little background on the system. There are three main aqueducts, the Petaluma, the Sonoma and the Santa Rosa. This community is obviously served off of the Sonoma Aqueduct, which is in green up there, I believe. Um, they were built between 1959 and 1963, so they are starting to get up there and age. Um, and each one of the water contractor per the terms of our restructured agreement for water supply pays the rate associated with the rate, which means in other words, not everyone pays the exact same rate. There are, are different rates depending on the community. Um, Sonoma Water, you know, we're proud of transparent and collaborative process that we go through annually in our budgeting. Um, each year in mid-January, we, we present a draft budget to the TAC ad hoc budget subcommittee. And then we work with the water contractors collaboratively before bringing the water rates to our board in mid, uh, mid-April. Um, and I did just want to say thank you to Mike for his participation in the, in the subcommittee as well as the TAC. Uh, and we're proud that both the subcommittee and the TAC did unanimously recommend this budget for approval. Um, so one more time, you know, the water transmission system, it is not just one fund. It's multiple funds and each one of these funds has a separate budget and rates. And then those are combined to make the composite rate that the water contractors pay. And you can see some of the different type of funds that we have up on the screen here. Um, so Sonoma Water, similar to the city's water system, you know, we're facing several challenges. Some of them are unique to us and some of them are common amongst everyone in the industry. Um, the one that is unique to us is that we do have a fully volumetric rate. And that means when the water, water deliveries are low, like they have been the past several years, it does put additional pressure on our rate increases. The common challenges that we're all facing, you know, is that we all operate critical infrastructure. It's integral to public safety, public health, and it needs to operate 24/7 because we serve 600,000 residents. Um, most of our, uh, assets are now 45 to 65 years old. You know, about 40% of them only have 10 to 20% of their useful life remaining. And once again, that consequence of failure is high because of the nature of the business that we're in. Um, you know, we're taking steps to address these challenges. Uh, we are implementing an asset management program currently. And as part of that, we've done preliminary condition assessments of our transmission as well as our production facilities. Uh, the outcome of those is that a lot of our assets are in less than adequate condition. Another effort that we're doing is we are creating a 20-year water master plan. And what this plan is going to do is take the data from the asset management plan, these condition assessments, as well as other planning efforts we've had related to things like hazard mitigation and, and reliability. Uh, and put all that together so we have a better picture of future year needs and costs of the system, as well as how we can best sequence those. And, uh, lastly, you know, one other challenge that we have that I don't have on this, the thing up here is we are subject to natural hazard vulnerabilities. I guess one earthquake, but also fire and flood. And so we're taking efforts to address all of these challenges. You know, we've highlighted a couple of the, uh, projects that we're doing with all the water contractors in collaboration. I'm not going to read them all out for time's sake. Um, but you know, the common themes here are things like hazard mitigation, reliability, water conservation, water education, as well as habitat enhancement related to Dry Creek. Um, if you want more information on this, it's in the, the large packet that we sent out and it's also all available on our website. Um, so what's in the budget this year? Uh, on the capital side, we've got hazard mitigation programs or projects. And you can see that we have five of them listed up here. We have been able, and we're always searching for offsetting revenue to help reduce the local cost share. We have been able to get about $12.6 million from FEMA to fund these types of projects in the past. And we are continuing to look at getting additional funding from both the federal and the state government in order to accomplish these projects at the lowest cost. In addition to hazard mitigation, we do have water resiliency projects. Um, I don't know the exact count, but there's several of them on the slide you can see up here. Uh, these fund things like the Santa Rosa Plain Wells project that we've been doing, which helps build resiliency during droughts to provide an alternative water source. Um, and there's also some other large projects that are coming up because of the age of our system. Uh, you know, in particular, the water treatment system modernization project, which is a large multi-year effort. And I, I know you guys heard from our chief engineer, so you're already all aware of this. So, uh, the total capital budget, uh, in, uh, for 2526 is about $18.3 million. On the operations side, um, you know, this funds things like routine maintenance, uh, and then also projects that are not capital. Um, you know, we're funding a lot of things, but some of the highlights are things like our cathodic protection program on the aqueducts to prevent corrosion. Uh, we're, uh, implementing a 10-year, $88 million tank recoding and maintenance program that were, uh, several tanks have already been done and we're continuing to do that. And we're also doing things like securing or procuring emergency inventory. You know, this is things like pipes and stuff like that so that if there is a seismic event, we have it on hand so we can quickly fix the issue. Um, and that total budget is about $45.8 million. Uh, the other funds that we have are what we call the sub-funds. These fund things like the biological opinion, water supply planning, as well as water conservation. Um, you know, some of the highlights in these funds, you know, like on the biological opinion side, we've, uh, we've already funded about, um, five miles of Dry Creek habitat enhancement. We get significant cost savings there, uh, because the US Army Corps picks up 65% of the cost share. Um, it also funds things like our water conservation and education program in partnership with the Sonoma Rain Water Saving Partnership. And, and that's another program, you know, it's been winning awards every year. It attracts a lot of, uh, outside funding by, from both the federal and state government. Um, so it's really helped to offset the cost for the local communities as well. Uh, so when you combine all of these different funds, we get a total budget of about $82 million. Um, of note, you know, this is about 7.6 million more than the previous year budget due to both those capital and operating programs that need to be done this year. We are offsetting this with about $21.2 million in grants, fund balance and use of bond proceeds. And we are planning on issuing a, a bond during this, uh, this period. About $33 million, it's not actually going to be funding projects on the Sonoma Aqueduct, but you do also pay for some of the common and storage projects. So there will be, uh, some bonding there for, for this community. And you can see the effect of that on the debt service line up there, which is showing an increase. Um, just to show you where our costs go, operations and maintenance is the largest factor in our budget. This year it's going to be about 56%. Capital projects comes in second every year. It's about 22% this year. And then the, uh, sub-funds in the debt service round out the rest of the total. I'm going to give you a simplified, real quick, high-level overview of how our, our rates are calculated. We follow the restructured agreement for water supply. And what that basically says is that we take the cost of operations and maintenance of the system and we have to divide that by the amount of water sold. And it prescribes that we use either the annual, uh, the average of the last three annual deliveries or the last 12 months, whichever is less. And so when you plug all those numbers in, you get basically a cost per acre foot. And once again, this is a simplified example, so this is not the exact rate that you guys are paying. Um, but what you can see here is because of this volumetric rate, when water deliveries are low, it puts additional pressure on, on the rate increase. Um, as you can see up there, the three-year annual average is a lower number. So 42,407 acre feet is what we're budgeting off this year. And that is 1% less than what was in last year's budget. So it did have an effect on the rate increase. And just to show you, you know, how sensitive the rate is to these changes in deliveries, uh, we are estimating this year that 500 acre feet of deliveries is about a 1.3% change in the rate. So, you know, we're aware that rate increases are not something that people like to talk about. Uh, we did take several steps, first with our staff in reviewing the budget and then also in conjunction with the TAC ad hoc budget subcommittee to try and take, uh, you know, see if we could push some projects off, defer them, reduce costs where we could in order to get the rate increase down. We were able to locate about $11.3 million in non-routine maintenance projects that could be pushed out on the calendar or trimmed. And we did, uh, also identify about $93 million in capital programs that were originally scheduled to occur within this three-year bond window. That could be pushed off outside of that bond window, which affects the debt service that is in this year's budget. Um, and then once again, we did use grants, bond proceeds and fund balance to, uh, make changes as well. The result of that is, you know, our original estimate of about 40% rate increase came down to what you're seeing today, which is 7.6%. So just to show you how the rate is calculated, you can see all the different funds in here that I talked about, operations and maintenance, the sub-funds and the, uh, capital program. Um, one thing of note that you'll see on this, this screen is the contractors do have the ability to set a discretionary capital charge. And this acts as a rate stabilization tool, builds capital to fund projects on the specific aqueducts. You can see that, uh, the Sonoma Aqueduct up there is, is the highest discretionary charge at $34.90. That's because there's less user base on this and because it's volumetric, it takes, uh, more money to build up the same amount of fund balance. Um, I think you guys have ranged from about zero to 38 in the last 10 years or so. Um, but once again, you know, you can see you are up there at 7.6% rate increase. Uh, Santa Rosa and Petaluma are higher and some of that has to do with the fact that they increased, or at least Petaluma customers did increase their capital charge this year. And I'm going to have, Lynn's going to talk about the long-range financial plan.
Good evening, Lynn Roselli, Financial Services Division Manager. Um, we have a couple more slides. This one is, uh, an example, long-range financial plan. And it takes our suite of more than 80 projects and, uh, programs them out based on, uh, water deliveries, water demand of, uh, 1% growth, uh, to determine what the rate increase might be given the implementation of these projects in the year that they're to be done with 1% water demand growth. And that's water, 1% demand growth is roughly equivalent to what we've been seeing in the, in the most recent years. Um, so on the, uh, Sonoma Aqueduct, we're, we're projecting, uh, 10% rate increases. In 2031, it bumped up to 10.6% because we're going to begin replacing portions of the Sonoma Aqueduct. And so, uh, that's, that's the reason why that, uh, that rate is slightly higher. And, um, there will be approximately 123.5 million in, um, in bonding and financing to optimize, uh, this rate so that, you know, we bond and the bonding actually helps us reduce the rate increases over time. Uh, the wholesale water rates per acre foot, uh, these are the other wholesale water suppliers in the Greater Bay Area. We're on the left-hand side there. We have the lowest rates. Uh, and we just, uh, like to point this out, you know, we all have very common um, challenges that we're facing. Um, and, uh, we have different sized systems, but, uh, we, we do have a lower water rate than the other wholesalers in the Bay Area. Um, so we've been making presentations to all the water contractors, city councils, town boards. Um, uh, the TAC, uh, Technical Advisory Committee unanimously voted for, uh, voted in favor of recommending the budget and rates to the Water Advisory Committee. Water Advisory Committee votes on April 7th and our board will adopt it on April 22nd. Uh, and, uh, we are here today to, uh, suggest or ask that, uh, the council make a recommendation to your WAC representative for the purposes of, uh, a vote, yes, for the purposes of a vote on, uh, on April 7th. Um, and just finally, uh, this, this is a, uh, a chart, a, a slide that just basically gives you many of the videos that we've put together that describe, uh, the maintenance projects that we're working on and give some context around, you know, the size and magnitude of the projects that we do. And we'd like to provide that to the public, um, so that they can better understand our system. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. We'll turn it over to the council for questions. Any questions? Any, yes, uh, Councilmember Day.
Thank you so much. Very educational and informative. And, uh, my question is I look at the owner facilities, it's kind of old and we needed the money. And however, and the users don't want to see the rate increased. So it's very challenging. I think now I look at you on a lot of the videos and I hope you can reach out and to our local residents, understand. So now I prefer, you know, increase right now a little bit more and then the future because right now overall investment, value, you know, comparing in the future still isn't a lower. And also to avoid the risk, also we making a proactive action in advance. Thank you.
Any questions? Comment or question?
Questions? Thank you, ma'am. Seeking a really brief answer, we also supply North Marin. And I'm confused, they got a lot of water. Why are we sending water to them?
Uh, North Marin is one of the water contractors. Uh, they, um, purchase water and, um, they also, um, have a, a aqueduct that provides water to Marin Municipal as well. They buy a significant amount of water and that actually does help keep our rates down.
Okay, I'd like to hear that. I'm curious, uh, I know that a lot of your, um, projects are influenced by, um, the shelf life left on a particular system. Curious, what determines the failure? Is it actual historical data of failure or is this speculative? Or some sort of metric that, I, in which you say it's going to last 20 years and that's based on the fact that a previous system had failed at 20? Or what determines that? Because that's driving a lot of what you're recommending.
Right, and it's kind of a mix of both. I, I mean, I think it's, it's both, uh, you, you know, the, sort of the research that's been done thus far on how long these things, you know, this, these assets will last, given the conditions that they're in, in the soil or wherever they are. And it's also the fact that Jake had mentioned that we're doing these condition assessments. So we go out there and we actually physically do the inspections to determine what the, what the condition of the, the aqueducts and pipes are. And if it's all in very good shape and we're not finding any cracks or anything, we, we can push out some of those projects for that timeline.
Great. And, uh, thank you. The, uh, just for clarity's sake, and this is not, I have, uh, no influence from Washington, so don't misinterpret this question. But under the fact that the budget is predominantly operation and maintenance, which means staff, are we lean and mean? Or where are we at as far as what our operations are all about? Because what I'm, what I also am seeing is that your projection is 10, 10, 10, 10 in the future. And the good news is that you have a very desirable commodity that it's hard to argue. But at the same time, you know, there are a lot of costs going up. So I'm just curious, uh, again, on, on this, on your overall system.
Yeah, so the, the costs in the, in this budget are maybe something on the order of 35 to 40% is, is labor.
Okay.
Uh, the rest is consultants and construction contracts and awards and equipment and materials and supplies and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Um, so, and, and we try to balance labor and consultants and, you know, getting projects done, buying the equipment to get the projects done so that, you know, we, we are balanced and efficient and making sure that the work gets done without overspending the time. And because we, um, uh, because, uh, you know, we, we want to keep the system maintained. We want to make sure we're keeping up with maintenance so that we don't end up with a failure and have to spend a whole lot more money and, and raise rates even further.
Great. And this is the last quick question. And it makes me smile when I look at this, uh, what our rates are compared to other Bay Area facilities or providers. And that's attributed to just good management, good work. Why are we the cheapest? I'm curious.
Uh, well, we have kept rates low, uh, in, in a number of years. Uh, first of all, our rates are very susceptible to the deliveries, right? Water deliveries. So Jake showed you that example of its expenses divided by water deliveries and if water. So Jake showed you that example of its expenses divided by water deliveries, and if water deliveries are low, your rate's gonna go up a lot more. So we had many years where we were just delivering, you know, a lot more water, fifty, sixty thousand acre feet of water. We're down to thirty-six, forty thousand acre feet now. So it's been a dramatic drop. But during those years, we were able to keep rates lower. We also ended up deferring maintenance. We kept rates low during COVID, the fires, the floods, because we worked with the water contractors, and we, we made a conscious effort, knowing that the financial hardships were significant, you know, to keep our rates a little bit lower. We also have maybe a smaller system than, say, SFPUC, for example, and some of the other wholesale water contractors.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Mia, I have another question.
Yes, you may.
I concerned about, you know, the outsourced of the water, because I know that you, right now, we just focus on delivery system. Because, you know, the Potter Valley project always a big concern for us. And if any in the update or in the long term, how it will affect our, you know, the water
If I may, it's a very complex topic.
Yeah.
And it would be kind of hard to just crack the shell of that. There's a lot of wheels turning, and a lot of the city's people involved in that, along with Sonoma Water and all the other water contractors. And I just don't know that we have time to get too deep into that tonight. If there's a specific question, though.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think what we'll do is we can schedule a separate meeting on that, but there is a potential of impacting rates for all the customers. So it's something we do need to pay attention to and keep, keep an eye on as it moves forward.
Yeah, and just, just so the city knows, the city, the restructured agreement, under the restructured agreement in this budget, the city does not pay anything for the Potter Valley project. So there are no expenditures, no budget baked into the budget for Potter Valley. However, the restructured agreement does not preclude using, including budget for Potter Valley in the future. So, but there's, as you said, a lot of wheels turning and a lot of work going on that, and we don't know yet what, what the impact's gonna be.
Yeah, I know, now we have many stakeholders combined. Thank you.
And so with this, you really, at this point, we're looking at, because I don't think we're taking any public comment on this, because this is a presentation. But then in regards to direction to Wellender, Vice Mayor Wellender, I think, do we want to give, is there any direction that the council would like to give to him, other than him using his best knowledge, that he has much better knowledge about this subject matter than we do at this point, being on that commission?
I would like to support you.
Yep, okay.
Thank you. And, and yes, I may have a little bit more exposure, but I can say that I'm overall very pleased with the way the water's being managed and the, and the work that Sonoma Water's doing. So I will gladly take your recommendation to the next board meeting.
And thank you. I mean, I realize many of the commissions that we sit on are very complex in, in what you need to understand to be able to make these decisions. So really appreciate the presentation, the work that you're doing, but also appreciate all of our council members and the commissions that they sit on, and what it takes, the work it takes to really be able to have a good understanding of these issues and be able to make good decisions. But thank you, thank you very much, and I really appreciated the analysis of where we're at and the percentage like that, you know, that we have about ten, ten percent of our life on many of our projects. So it's that type of information that I think is really helpful to us to understand kind of like, well, where, for those of us that don't sit on the commissions, where are we at? You know, what is, are we in, you know, a period where we would need to be worried or not worried, or, you know? So I think that that really helped a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and we're moving on now to the consent calendar. So all the items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council or staff request specific items to be removed for a separate action. So does anybody want to pull any of the items from the consent calendar?
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Yes, please.
You do, oh, I thought you were, I'm sorry. I thought you were shaking your head.
I have a couple of questions on one that would not justify pulling, but the two that I'd like, I'm gonna start with the old, the largest number, the seven point seven one that has to do with our, our contract with the plaza. I want to say, I want to pull it in the spirit of the National Surveyor Week, that we talk about the survey for the plaza. And then also, I would like to pull item seven point six, which has to do with our master tree list, just for some clarity. And then regarding a couple of minor questions, which do you want me to ask after we move on this?
No, we should ask those before.
Okay, I thought you just had comments or questions, but you actually want to pull seven point six?
Seven six and seven seven for a little bit of discussion, please.
Okay, seven six and seven seven. All right, so then now you can go ahead and ask your questions, and then we'll move ahead with approving the rest of the consent calendar and then move on to seven six and seven seven.
Great, very minor items. One is the meeting notes of March fifth, and it had to do with our districting. It just seemed like there was no mention of the fact that we had agreed to go to consideration of five districts versus four with an at-large mayor. I know we've talked about the maps, but that wasn't mentioned, and I just think that that's a pretty significant decision that was made at that meeting that should be noted. And the next one is even more minor, and that is just, I don't believe I attended a And that's it.
And, city manager?
What we could ask for is, after we take public comment, would be a, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended per Vice Mayor Wellender's discussion.
Yeah, edits, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, we are gonna take public comment on the consent calendar? Yeah, just please let's state your name.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Hi, everybody.
Before you make a comment, I believe you're here to speak on.
Tree list?
Tree list. So I think since Alan got pulled.
Oh, yeah, it's been pulled, so we'll wait till we have, so just, we're just gonna go through a process to approve the rest of it, and then we'll get on to that.
Okay, I just want to let you know, I'm here.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm glad you're here.
If you can make a motion for seven point one through five and seven point eight, and then we'll move on to the other.
So.
I make a motion to approve consent on the calendar without an a seven point two six and a seven point seven.
With the edits?
With edit.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Can we just take, go ahead and take all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Motion passes unanimously. So now what we're gonna do is go to seven point six, adopt a resolution adopting a new City of Sonoma master tree list.
Can I have a point of order, manager?
Yes.
As this becomes part of the, does this move into regular calendar as they are now polled, or are these to be done now?
They're to be done now. So we'll take them individually, and so that we can answer questions, and then the council can either give direction or vote.
Okay, just clarifying. Thank you so much.
So I am going to hand the master tree list over to you?
Yes, I think, I think what we want to do first is understand what the question is, and we're happy to respond to any questions. If you'd like us to make a presentation on that item, we can do that as well.
Do you want to just go through your questions on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't think a presentation would be necessary. Again, overall, I appreciate all the work that's gone in on this master tree list. The questions I have are, one is that we have had historically a master tree list for street trees that had been identified for certain zones within, if you were on a particular street and it happened to fall in a certain quadrant, then there was a very limited list of street trees to be used on that. Now, I believe to the best of my observation, over the last ten, fifteen years, it hasn't been adhered to. So my first question is, have we just simply abandoned that? And that no longer is germane? Is, that's one question. And then the, the other question that I have is how this is going to be used? Whether or not this is a tree list that is going to be a tool of information for an applicant who wants to plant a tree? Is this list something that must be adhered to, to just street trees? And yet, this list is a lot more expansive in terms of recommendations, whether it be a patio tree, or a specimen tree, or backyard tree. And, and the other, the last one would be, of course, whether or not we're expecting this list to be adhered to for what I would call general planting trees on people's private
I'm gonna go back to question one.
Okay.
And thank you for hearing this item tonight. I believe question one was, there were existing tree lists, and have they gone away or not necessarily been?
Well, there, there was a list. Again, I think there was a recognition that there's some value in having street tree continuity, rather than having just a mixed green salad of one neighbor plants this, one neighbor plants that. And I think that's why the original tree list was made, that, that certain street might have some continuity. I can just give you an example of the housing tract that I moved into all had a particular street tree. Not all of them exist now, because people have cut them down and put in whatever they wanted. But the intent, I think, was to have continuity. This doesn't reference anything like this, and does, and at least it didn't seem to. And so my question is, is that old system been abandoned, and that we no longer are recognizing the value of street tree continuity?
I don't think that the old system's necessarily been abandoned. And the way that this is formulated was by taking two existing lists that I don't believe are the list that you're referring to, which I believe the intent of that was more for a development process. And as you're going through and building developments, this would give a guide to having this type of continuity that you're mentioning. And that's still followed, albeit, we're very small, and our development projects are very small. And so it has kind of gone by the wayside a little bit, but that would be something that could be brought up for a bigger development that does happen in the city limit.
Okay, I think that might be worthy of a discussion at some other point with another group at some point, but not necessarily for tonight.
And then let me go to your second question, which was, yes, this is a tool for the application of a tree removal, and this will be provided to the applicant who has the approved tree removal for a list of trees to choose from that are, is not mandatory through the process for replanting the new tree.
So this would be a tree that needed a tree permit for removal, and that we are just simply saying, here are recommendations.
Correct.
And that, in, in essence, you've done homework, we've had a review through the arborist that says, yes, they should do well, and you've got specifics as far as data, height, width, et cetera, what kind of soil. It really is a, an accommodation that we're providing, as far as.
Yes, and this is not gonna be something that's hidden and only provided to applicants for tree removals either. This is gonna be posted on our website. We'll push it out there to the public, you know, sporadically, I would think, at the right time, at the right place. And then also, yeah, there was quite a bit of research done with this by a member of the Post Commission who's here tonight, and also the city arborist, John Mazzur. And this went through multiple iterations.
I'm sure it did.
And a lot, a lot of work's been done to compile this list. And also, John had a hand in, John Mazzur, or city arborist had a hand in reviewing and commenting.
Yeah. And contrary to what some may have thought, I don't take exception to any of the list, and I recognize that a lot of work went into it. And I think overall, it's gonna be a positive tool for the city to have for our residents.
I agree.
Do we have other questions? I have a, two quick questions. One was fire hardening issues taken into account in recommending these trees? So for example, trees that would do better in a fire situation or survive better, space, also based on the kind of watering that they need? And was any consideration taken for trees that are near a sidewalk, that could disrupt a sidewalk because of the root structure?
The first question, fire was consulted, and fire wanted, I consulted with Fire's vegetation management coordinator, and basically, they don't get involved in picking trees and, and giving advice to put trees on lists. They want the maintenance aspect of that to be more adhered to, where, speaking with vegetation management, the tree itself isn't the problem, it's the undergrowth.
Exactly.
And if there's a ladder that allows the fire to get from the bottom to the top in the undergrowth, so maintaining the canopy and vegetation management are where fire wanted to be. And they would offer advice about certain trees that were on the list, and if they were, we would take them off, but none of those were on the list.
Great. Thank you. And then, yeah, in regards to, you know, sidewalks being obstructed because of trees that are planted.
Yeah, and the sidewalk displacement issue, is it a good one? The trees that are on this list are not problematic in the two-by-two. The way this list is divided is, it's, the planting area is listed right on the sheet. And if it's a two-by-two area, and it's not a tree that should not be underneath power lines, that's probably a pretty good candidate. And then, once you get that good candidate for a tree, you have to plant it properly with the root barriers. And that's pretty much all the precautions that we can take. Because there are certain trees that are problematic, they are not on the list, we know they're problematic, and we're not gonna plant anymore in sidewalk areas.
Good. Thank you very much. I just wanted to be sure those considerations were taken to do again. All right, so at this point, I, I'm assuming we would take these one at a time. Could I please, I'd like to entertain a motion?
Public comment.
A public comment. Yes, thank you. And we do have a public commenter.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
I'm glad you're asking these questions. We thought about all of these things when we were looking at this list. I'll keep it brief.
And your name again, please.
Jessica Mizaraka, Parks and Open Space Commissioner. Really good to see you all again. So the genesis of this list is, it's from the UC Master Gardener Program of Sonoma County. In 2021, they developed a palette of tree species for the city of Santa Rosa that's most likely to thrive in the climate projected for 2050 to 2100. That's what this list is about. It's getting these trees to do well in climate with all of its, all of its features. They call it their Climate Forward Trees Project. They used a science-based model based on eight criteria, including drought and temperature tolerance, which speaks to fire, pest, pest and damage resistance, habitat friendliness, maintenance required. So city arborist, John Mazzur, and I worked together to take the current, I'm gonna go over time by a little bit, the current master tree list, which is separate from the district tree list. Quite frankly, I asked what was the district tree list used for, and was told by Public Works, they don't even really use it, so I don't know what it was originally used for. So we took the existing list, the new Climate Forward Tree List, and over a period of several sessions, drilled it down from the UC Master Gardener list into this list. It includes a real nice spread of sizes and varieties suitable for lots of different locations and needs. You'll notice on here, it says, street trees, you can pick street trees. We've got a lot of extra notes here about what isn't good under power lines or street trees, what's more beautiful, what's the maintenance like, things like that. And we wanted to make sure people had a real choice. Again, it's not a required list, but it's recommended, and if people want their trees to survive, that's a factor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That was good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Okay, now, at this point, do I have a motion?
Since I pulled it, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda item as presented.
Do I have a second? All right. Would you? Would you like to take the roll?
Vice Mayor Wallander?
Yes.
Councilmember Ding?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Mayor Farraravis?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, now we're gonna move on to item 7.7, to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager execute a professional services agreement with BKF Engineers in the amount of $39,888 for the Plaza Park Topographical Survey and Resolution Authorizing a Budget Adjustment in Amount of $43,877. So I am gonna actually, at this point, turn it over to you, city manager, to see if you have any additional comments? Or would you like to start with the questions that Vice Mayor has?
Yeah, we'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor. But before we do that, we do want to acknowledge one change we made to this item that on the contract.
Yeah, there's a professional services agreement that's attached to the resolution that the terms of the professional service agreement are gonna be the same, the ones that are in the staff report, but the form of the agreement is gonna be different. The one that was in the packet for the RFP was different than the one presented. It's minor boilerplate changes, but just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that's not the actual agreement you're asking to be approved tonight.
The form is different.
Correct, but the amounts, the length, the scope of work, those types of things are all the same.
All the same, all right, thank you. And so Vice Mayor, your questions regarding?
Yes, I actually have two things. One is a few minor questions, but then I would also like to bring it back and just have a little bit of discussion up at the diast, if that's possible. So question number one is that we did get eight proposals, and that I'm just curious from trying to understand what industry is out there. Mike, could you tell us, was there a big economic spread between the quotes? I like who you picked, so I'm not questioning that. I was just curious if there was a wild spread in numbers?
Because these are professional services quotes, all cost proposals were in sealed envelopes. And the only cost proposal that was open was the chosen firm.
So we got the best quote, because we don't know what the other ones are. That's fine.
Most qualified.
Most qualified, okay, thank you on that.
However, looking at a couple of plug numbers, I feel this is a very reasonable quote.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. I'm curious then, in part, I noticed that we have a six-month contract written into the agreement as far as the termination date, based upon assuming that if we prove it tonight, we're writing six months. What is your best guess based upon their availability as being identified? What the timeline might be for this work?
Specific availability for this job has not been discussed with the company. However, their Gantt chart that they put into their proposal seems like it's gonna be over fairly soon after it gets started.
Yeah.
One, I would say two and a half to three and a half months after it started. And that would be from the time we have the, and I'm going by memory on this, but I think that that's what their Gantt chart reflected. However, there's a little more to it than that, and we could follow up with some information on that after for a little more specifics.
Okay, well, I was, again, just curious, because I did just review the hour breakdown, and it looked like there were not tremendous field hours out there, more than about, it looks like about a week's worth of work, so, or maybe a week and a half.
Once again, they put together a pretty detailed Gantt chart. However, options two and three were reflected in that Gantt chart.
Oh, I see, and we're not going that route at this point in time?
Correct.
We're just doing options two.
Yeah, but once we get a conversation with them regarding only task one, that information will be readily available and can be passed along.
I'm going to end my question, but want to encourage some discussion, a little bit of discussion after this. I'm gonna steal the expression from an individual who's sitting in the audience that talked about how excited she was when we authorized getting a Parks Director. I'm equally as excited about moving forward and taking this first step on what I call the Plaza Sustainability approach, so thank you.
Yes. So do we have any other questions from the council? Okay, so we're gonna move on and ask for, is there any public comment at this time? All right, seeing none, so I will bring it back to the council for discussion, unless someone is prepared to make a motion.
The reason I wanted to bring back for discussion, and I may slip into a question too, is that I'm looking very much forward to this work and was wondering, under the goal that we have for 2025 as far as Plaza Sustainability, what additional steps may be taken? What the timeline might be of those additional steps? Just so hopefully, we can all get kind of excited about moving forward. So maybe it's a question I first direct to our city manager, and then I'll pull back for some comments.
Sure, we've got two things on the goal list. One is the Plaza Sustainability Plan, and then also the Plaza Corridor Plan. And so I'm looking at those two separately. This obviously takes big steps towards starting the Plaza Sustainability Plan. It'll give us a base for the existing plaza, elevations, grades, everything we need. In terms of the plaza, we have drainage issues, we have irrigation issues, electrical issues, placement structural things that we want to look at. So this will provide that base. Getting to your question about what else we can do to move that initiative forward, one is looking at a maintenance plan. I think when the new Parks Director gets on board, they'll be heavily involved in that process and developing that maintenance plan with the crews, working with Public Works. And then, we could, we also had talked about looking at an irrigation plan in terms of what an irrigation consultant can provide us to say, what is the best rollout of that? And that's something we've talked about, potentially doing an RFP, to see who's out there, who can provide that service. We'll want to coordinate any work we do out there. Then we'll kind of walk through this about if we start to rip up a sidewalk to try to address drainage issues, can we address electrical issues or irrigation issues at the same time, so we're not replacing things multiple times? So that's the tricky part that we'll work through, but I think we can start these processes in parallel and try to get things moving within the next few months, ideally, so we can start to get some cost. Ideally, I'd like to bring some, get some budget numbers, so I can bring that forward to the council in the budget process. So you have numbers to look at in the budget over the next few months that you adopt in June for both the Sustainable Plan, but also the Corridor Plan. Because in order to move forward on that, I'm gonna have to bring you some budget numbers to do that.
Great, thank you.
Any comments? I guess, yes, no, that was not, that was just, you didn't raise your hand. Okay, thank you. I guess, I thought you had, it was a pen movement, yes.
Well, just because the Vice Mayor is asking for enthusiasm, I just want to say, I too, I'm very enthusiastic about this. And I think it, I think you can't plan on where you're going if you don't know where you are. And this is a great first step in planning where we are. And, you know, it's long overdue, and thank you to staff for bringing it forward.
Yeah, and I would just say, echo the enthusiasm around the long-term plan. But I would think that this would be, whether or not we had that long-term plan or not, that this would be something that we would be doing. So I really see this is, you know, this is important because I know personally, there's a puddle I walk through or avoid walking through on a regular basis. And, you know, it really determines what kind of shoes I'm putting on in the morning. So.
Yeah, and great, I'm happy that I hear some joint support on this enthusiasm. I think the other thing that I just want to throw out there and remind everybody that because of the fact of its use, there's gonna take some really strategic planning on how are we gonna slice up the pie and begin moving forward? So if we do get a plan for the whole, it's like we're not gonna be able to shut down the plaza in its entirety. We're gonna be doing it in a sequence of what I call pie slivers, more or less, in terms of implementation. It may be the southwest quadrant, it may be the northeast quadrant to begin with, but it's gonna be sequential. And I'm just anxious that the sooner we get our plan, then we can enact this slicing schedule. And the sooner we can start, the sooner we'll be done. And the last comment that I really appreciate the fact is, about a year ago, I think former Mayor Gurney may recall this, is we had a real concern about a particular major tree in the plaza. And that there was a condition that thought that we may end up having, from a liability standpoint, cut it down. So part of that, my passion for upgrading our irrigation system is just to protect our existing trees from what our in-house arborists had said, this is not good when you have water throwing up against the trunks. And so that's, again, is part of the reason that I'm displaying a little bit of impatience, so. But again, thank you to staff.
All right. And so now, I believe that we can ask for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All right, okay. All those in favor, we're gonna do it this way here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great enthusiasm.
Yes, okay, passes unanimously. Now we are, now we're moving on to our regular agenda. My goodness, here we are, finally.
Madam Mayor, I know we have some people here on item 9.1. Is it possible to move that up?
Oh, that's right, that is right, that is.
And I think it sort of goes well with the previous item, it might.
So do I have a motion to move?
Yeah, I don't even think, I think if you're desperate.
Yeah, without a section, you could.
Oh, I get to, oh my goodness, I do have some power. Okay, boy, I'm gonna be more creative going forward. All right. So, all right, so now we're gonna move to 9.1 on a regular calendar, and this is a very exciting item also. It's to adopt a resolution to accept lumber donation from Sonoma Raceway for the refurbishment of benches in the Sonoma Plaza Amphitheater and Park. So once again, we have Mike Berger from our Public Works, our Public Works Directors.
Good evening once again, and thank you. This item tonight, as the mayor stated, is to adopt a resolution to accept a lumber donation from Sonoma Raceway for refurbishment of benches in the Sonoma Plaza Amphitheater and Park. As part of the city's efforts to maintain and enhance the historic Sonoma Plaza, the heavily visited, actively used park, the Public Works Department identified a number of projects requiring more than routine maintenance. This included the repair and refurbishment of the wood benches in the amphitheater and throughout the park and playground areas that were eligible for funding, in part, excuse me, by the city's Prop 68 grant administered through the California Parks Department. Feedback from residents and the Parks, Rec, and Open Space Prose Commission reinforced the need to replace the plaza's deteriorating wood seating and tables. In response, the city sought and received approval to use Prop 68 funds for replacing the wood benches in the amphitheater throughout the plaza. However, the total cost for this work was estimated approximately $40,000, resulting in a funding gap of $22,000 after completing the initial grant-funded elements, including Big Belly Trash Receptacle installations and new bike racks. The city had approximately $18,000 remaining in the total project budget out of the anticipated $40,000. In February 26, in February 25, the city was connected with Mr. Brian Flynn, general manager of the Sonoma Raceway, regarding a potential donation opportunity. The Sonoma Raceway generously offered to donate lumber through its partnership with Humboldt Lumber. This contribution valued at approximately $24,000 enabled the city to replace the wood benches in the amphitheater as well as the benches and tables throughout the plaza. Without Sonoma Raceway's donation, the city would only have had the funds to complete the amphitheater bench replacements, delaying the much-needed upgrades to the rest of the plaza's seating areas and tables. Humboldt Lumber has delivered the donated lumber to Public Works Yard, where Public Works staff will coat and then install the new benches and tables. In December, the Prose Commission reviewed various finishing options, including both paint and wood stain. Following that discussion, paint was selected as the preferred option, as it provides protection, aids in graffiti abatement, and maintains a look similar to the existing benches and tables. And I'll have a little more on that after I'm through the resolution or the agenda item. In September 2020, the city council adopted by resolution the Memorials and Donated Improvements Acceptance Policy. The purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines, standards, and procedures for the installation and care of memorials such as park benches or plaques and donated park and facility improvements in the city of Sonoma. The policy was established to ensure that appropriate oversight is provided in preserving our city parks and facilities. In accordance with the city's policy, a donation agreement between the city of Sonoma and Sonoma Raceway has been prepared, attachment aid to this resolution, and staff has vetted the request, which is before the city council for approval. The donation is categorized as facility improvement and meets the parameters outlined in the policy. Public Works staff will be working with Prop 68 grant administrator on alternative uses for the remaining $18,000 in project funding. In order for the expenses to be reimbursed by the grant, all work and reporting must be completed by 2028, so there's ample time to reprogram the remaining project funding in the plaza. And then, just an update on the coatings. It might be considered sacrilegious to paint redwood, and there's been an emphasis to put stain on there to preserve the beauty of the wood, the natural beauty of the wood. And one of the things that we've been struggling with is maintaining the benches and the potential for graffiti. And if the graffiti gets put on, the whole thing needs to be sanded down, it needs to be removed, and then you could recoat with stain and the protective seal on the outside. After consulting with pros, pros was leaning toward this. They also understood the maintenance aspect of it, and they were okay with paint, as staff's recommendation. However, after further consulting and talking and looking at this wood and the quality of the wood, it's really some beautiful wood, and it's out the courtyard, and we're ready to get started on it. And we are gonna backtrack a little bit on that. And the current process is gonna be to go ahead and do like a one-year test and see if we can keep up with any sort of markings on the benches. And basically, maybe even come up with, get some extra. All this wood is custom order, it's custom size. And so it's cut at the mill in the size that we ordered to be the same size or a better size equivalent to what we have out there. So we're gonna go ahead and put, get some extra wood, get it in stock, maybe even go ahead and sand it, stain it, and preserve it so it's ready to put in out there if we do have one. We could take it back to the, do the switch out, take it back to the yard, and just work on it there. So there's an update on the coating process.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and then if there's any other questions?
So I'll just add, I think this is obviously a very exciting opportunity we received. I want to acknowledge that we do have the general manager of Sonoma Raceway, Ryan Flynn, in the audience. We also have Karen Collins, who did connect us with the Sonoma Raceway. So I want to thank her for making that connection and for the city and the Raceway. But I did want to give Sonoma Raceway an opportunity to make a statement, if that's okay, since they were part of this project.
Oh, yes. Certainly appreciate it.
Acknowledge Brian and his work.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Just a quick story, Steve Page, who you all know. My predecessor, two generations removed, connecting me with Karen probably 18 months ago when I joined the Raceway formally. And she had a fundraiser at her house, and I met her, and I didn't realize that would be the beginning of many, many phone calls. And her persistence is, she's probably the definition of persistence. So she tried to get me out to the Overlook Trail a couple of times. That's obviously, she's one of the founding, you know, passionate members of getting that where it is today. And I finally agreed, she goes, why don't you just come walk it with me? I said, well, I walk it all the time with my wife. And so we did, we did the three-mile hike, and she was pounding me on all these improvements. And I said, hey, we don't have a lot of cash because we're committed to all these things, some in Sonoma, some around the area with Speedway charities. And I said, but, we, thinking out loud, we have some opportunities with some trade partners, and maybe we could use some timbers from Mendocino Forest Products, who is actually the company that we have the great trade relationship with. And she said, I don't, let me check. And they decided they're using Flagstone Steppers right for that. But she reached out to David, and she came back to me and said, hey, would you be interested in helping the city? They have a project and some needs. I'm like, absolutely. So really, Karen deserves much of the credit, in reality. And we couldn't be happier to help the city. I know how important it is. Steve Page has preceded me and is an ambassador for the city, a tremendous ambassador, has been a great resource to me. And he just has emphasized how important it is. I see it now, I'm a member of the community. I walk through that park all the time like everybody else. Lisa walks through the park, she listens to the music at the amphitheater. So we couldn't be happier. We have a trade relationship with Mendocino, and they basically get sweets and hospitality at the race events. And then in exchange for that, they donate wood products, and then we use it for, you know, shade structures or our own needs. And when this came up, I'm like, I think we have some, I think we have some trade left. And David reached out to me, and it just worked. And we're so happy, and we hope the stain will work, because it's such. because it's such beautiful wood, and maybe we've got some extra cushion in the budget that if we run lean, maybe we can go to that well. But, on behalf of the Raceway and the Smith family, Sonoma is a very important part of what we do, and can't thank you enough for letting us participate with this, so thank you all.
Thank you so much. All right, so, okay, we did that, questions from the staff? Are we, we didn't, we haven't done questions yet. Do we have any questions from the staff? I mean, from the council, from staff either, no, okay, so now we're gonna move forward to public comment. Anybody want to make any further public comment? All right, so now we're going to move back to the council for a motion or discussion.
Before we make a motion, I, you know, I really appreciate this beautiful story. And also, you know, the people in the care and the city, and also recently, and Sonoma Raceway, they have Ferrari challenges. Also, they put in a, in a percentage, and the money to our boys and girls' club. That is a tradition initiated by Steve Page, and it is greatly appreciated. And also, what we mentioned, and Steve Page, our community member, and they got a chance to use, and sell their using name, you know, for example, AT&amp;T in the Raceway, but he stick with the Sonoma Raceway, you know, in some way, you know, showcase our Sonoma. It is so much appreciated, thank you.
Great, yes.
So, I, yeah, many, many things. This is just a wonderful gift. Thank you, Karen, thank you, everybody, and honestly, Sonoma Raceway, you know, provides so much for the community, including all the people that come to watch the races and then come up to Sonoma and spend their money up here, which helps our city, you know. So we're, it's a symbiotic relationship there, so we appreciate that. And I just want to, you know, I think most of us have had an opportunity to go out to the track, and I actually watched the, the whole NASCAR race, the whole thing last year. I was, I couldn't hear for a while, but that was great, it was so exciting, and it's, it's just such an amazing thing that we have such a high-class sporting venue in our area and that they're part of the community, and just thank you so much for all of that. I enjoy it very much, and the wood's gonna be beautiful.
All right, yes.
Just one quick comment. I was gonna just make the suggestion to Brian that this will probably not stop the calls coming from Karen.
Okay, thank you all, thank you, Brian, thank you, Karen. So, now I'm gonna ask for a motion.
So moved.
Aye, second.
Oh, okay, we're gonna go ahead, I think on this one as well, we could just do a, a regular, I would like all those in favor.
Aye.
Yes, okay, passes unanimously, all right. Thank you so much. So now we are going to move back to eight point one, and this is a public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing to introduce ordinance repealing sections two point zero eight point two six oh, two point zero eight point two seven oh, and two point zero eight point two eight oh, amending sections two point one oh point zero two oh, and two point one oh point zero three oh of the Sonoma Municipal Code pertaining to the city's finance director and treasury duties.
Thank you, Mayor Faravas, and members of the council. I'm going to be taking this item this evening.
Oh, thank you very much. I don't know him.
This is in lieu of my city council communication. Before you this evening is really just a cleanup ordinance that does two things. The first thing it does is it codifies in our municipal code where the city treasurer duties lie. The duties essentially of the city treasurer are the safekeeping of city funds. And therefore, staff is recommending that that be placed with the finance director, since we now have a finance director. The other part of this cleanup, currently, our code in nineteen ninety-five created the finance director position, and then in nineteen ninety-six, it amended the city manager ordinance and said, the city manager does everything that the finance director does. So this cleans that up, since we have a finance director, and removes those finance director obligations from the city manager and gives them back to the finance director. So really, it's just a cleanup item at this point. It will ensure that, that property will be filing as our city treasurer Form 700s, and David Hewin will no longer have to indicate that he's the city treasurer on his Form 700. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, yes, so to the council, anybody have any questions at this point? No, I, okay, great, love clean it. Okay, I would like to open this up for a public comment. No public comment, coming back for any comments or a motion.
I'll move to adopt a res, I'm gonna wait a second, I'm gonna turn on the right one here. Introduce the ordinance repealing sections two point zero eight point two six zero, two point zero eight point two seven zero, and two point zero eight point two eight zero, and amending sections two point one zero point zero two zero, and two point one zero point zero three zero of the Sonoma Municipal Code pertaining to the city's finance director and treasurer's duties.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I second that.
Great, thank you, and since this is a public hearing, let's take a roll call.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Ding?
Aye.
Councilmember Lo? Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Mayor Faravas?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and now I am closing the public meeting, hearing, and we're moving on to nine point two, City of Sonoma General Plan Annual Progress Report, and direct staff to distribute to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, LCI. And I am gonna turn it over to Diane Levine, Associate Planner, and also our Director of Community Development. So, here we go. Thank you for your presentation.
Hello, Community Development Director Jennifer Gates, thank you, mayor and city council. So, before you tonight is our 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report. This is an annual document that we are required to prepare by the state. It is required to be submitted by April first, so that's that date you were hearing about a little bit earlier today. And so we do a lot of research as a team in our planning division and building division, and try to collect as much information as we can about our progress in implementing our general plan, and very specifically in our housing element. You'll see a lot more detail in a bunch of spreadsheets, hopefully zoomed in. I noticed that it was quite small in the font. But it's gonna cover a calendar year, so not a fiscal year, so last year will be 2024 that it covers. And it's intended just to inform, so LCI used to be called OPR, Office of Planning and Research, so they changed their name last year at some point, and just to inform them of our planning activities. And then for HCD, it is their legal requirement to check on us, so that's their check. So this is gonna fulfill our requirements to submit this. I, in the general plan section, we are mostly highlighting what we're doing in community development department, but we're hoping that in the next general plan cycle that we'll have more measurables that we can maintain and work with all the different departments and agencies to help us understand where we are in our implementation, and so have a little bit more robust findings in that general plan section starting in twenty twenty-seven, so it'll be the 2026 year, so that's the goal. All right, with that, I'm gonna pass it on to Diane, who is going to give you that update.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the introduction, Vice Mayor Wellender, and councilmembers. So, as Jennifer mentioned, this is a required annual report submitted April first of every year for the previous year. It's submitted to HCD as well as LCI. That's a mouthful one, I had to practice that a few times before tonight, I hadn't said it out loud enough. So, we'll go ahead and move on to the next slide here. So, some examples of 2024 tasks accomplished with the aim of fulfilling the goals, policies, and sometimes regulatory requirements are, for example, the general plan task force meeting four times for the general plan update, the improvements to online permit submittals and tracking systems, so both the, the citizen portal and the internal portal for tracking purposes, which hopefully will also make us be able to have a more robust report in the following years. We did include some other department accomplishments, including the completion of the Chase Street Bridge project, as well as the continuation and also improvements to homeless services. And planning staff attended, it was a total of twenty-eight public hearings, advised for twenty-five of those, a couple of joint meetings, as well as our attendance at the council meetings. So, by now, you're all probably at least somewhat familiar with the housing element, its implementation programs, and the arena requirements. The housing element, as Jennifer mentioned, also requires an annual progress report that's submitted to HCD, and that not only tracks our numbers for arena allocation, which you can see up on the board for the sixth, the sixth housing cycle was three hundred and eleven, but it also tracks our implementation of the programs that are identified in our housing element. So I, I think there's a total of thirty-two programs in our housing element. So, this is in large part now what planning staff undertakes as part of our responsibilities. And in the third row down, you can see, so we had a total in our arena allocation of three hundred and eleven, and in 2023, there were ten permit, permits, units permitted, and then last year, there were twenty-nine. So, that's pretty good progress, and we'll head into 2025 with two hundred and seventy-two remaining. And here's just some updates to the larger housing development projects that the planning staff is still working on. The first one, Montaldo, that's a fifty-unit complex that does have a twenty-five percent affordable component to it, and it's currently under environmental review, so we're conducting the environmental impact report right now. The Hummingbird subdivision with fifteen units and an affordable component is currently under construction, and they began accepting applications for the affordable units in fall of 2024. And we also have 254 First Street East, which is thirty-one units, with an affordable component, and those entitlements were received. Some of the zoning code updates that were completed and approved in 2024 included the two-unit in urban lot split development. That was an update to be in compliance with state law. We had the post-approval expiration date extension, that was going from one year in some sections and two years in either, and we wanted to give the two-year extension to those folks that had received entitlements for them to be able to have the timeframe to apply for their building permit. It just helps with streamlining and kind of supports the Housing Accountability Act. Additionally, sidewalk seating permit amendments, outdoor dining, display, sales, and standards for sidewalks. Additionally, reducing parking requirements and development standards for parking facilities. So additional highlights from 2024 include these here up on the screen. A number of these are from the housing program implementations. Just the, I included the highlighted ones, which were, are ones that we know HCD is very up to keeping tabs on, and so we want to make that a top priority. So these are the staffing of three positions within the community development department. Sorry, that, that earlier bit I just said about the programs, that'll, that'll be on the next slide. But we did fill the building official role, as well as two associate planner roles. We updated the city's SEQA implementation policy from nineteen ninety-one. We completed the 2024, or the 2023 General Plan APR, conducted nine public study sessions on the general plan update. We developed the express permits to just create more streamlining for certain permit types that just get to go through an express process, participation in the NAPA Sonoma Housing Collaborative, and the installation of the, the beginning of the installation for the AMI meters, purchase of two electric vehicles, updates to the public art policy, allocated funding for the overnight shelter and Sonoma overnight support, as well as funding one full-time homelessness caseworker and providing additional necessities to unhoused populations during extreme weather events. So here's where I was going with some of the priorities going into 2025 that the community development department is focusing on. A few of them are those main programs that we know HCD is looking at, so we want to stay on top of those. The ADU ordinance update to comply with state regulations, also working on getting the pre-approved ADU plans up on the website for, for folks to, to utilize, as well as additional technical resources with ADUs. Identifying affordable housing funding sources, developing and adopting impact fees, more streamlining for designer view process and, and taking a look at what triggers designer view, so if there are cases where people don't, don't really need to go to designer view, reevaluating that and making the process easier for folks. Cleaning up the sign ordinance, making that more streamlined for, typically for business owners, so that's a bit quicker of a process for them. Identifying rezoning to allow for more affordable housing projects by right. Updating the development code when it comes to objective standards for multifamily developments and mixed-use developments. Kind of a thorough review of the city's development code, at least in Title 19. Update is needed, just clean it up, make it more streamlined. I've heard that quite a bit just since I've been here, and I have to work in it, and I, I'm excited for that, so that will take a lot of, a lot of work, but we're happy to do it. Continuing with the Open Gov workflow, the online permitting, continuing to improve that, improving that, both from, from both sides. Wireless telecommunication facility updates to get up to standards for FCC standards that are, that need to be updated in the code. And then, recently, we were working on reviewing requests for qualifications to obtain a consultant to do a tree inventory and urban canopy assessment, and that's in the works right now, and I think the hope is to get that assessment done by the end, like, fall of 2025, so. Lot to do, we're excited, and Jennifer and I are happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions from council?
I've used my allotted questions for tonight.
Oh, my goodness, I wasn't gonna even say anything about that. Anybody, anybody else? I do have, I have one question, if, I don't have any other questions here from the council, is just identifying affordable housing funding's resources, could you just go into that a little bit more?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the toughest things every time we go to these collaboratives and discuss everyone saying the same thing. It's just, it's just a difficult, I don't really know even how to expand on it anymore. I went to a gen housing meeting, and we had representatives there just talking about the cost of, of the affordable housing projects and just how difficult it is to get that funding. I don't know if you want to expand on that, Jennifer?
So there's one other item that goes along with the affordable housing component, and it's something that we had identified a couple of years ago, is that we really need to get our policy in place for our housing trust fund, and really set that up, and then also identifying sources to feed that trust fund. And so that is part of what we're gonna be looking at as part of the affordable housing funding resources. We're also doing the update to the inclusionary ordinance, and that's in process right now. And with that comes a potential update to our in lieu fee amount. And something else that we'll bring back for discussion that was tabled a few years ago was the was the actual impact fee for additions to single-family homes and new homes. We approved the amount per square foot for a commercial, but we didn't actually approve the one for single-family homes. And so looking at that a little bit closer of how we want to apply it.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, at this point, we will take comments from the public. It's a quiet group tonight, and so seeing none. I, I just imagine there's people from past council meetings that have passed on that are all out there and still sitting, sitting, thinking. I should have said this earlier. Anyway, so now bring it back to any discussion, comments from the council. You know.
I'm ready to move.
Go, go ahead and move.
We'd like to move, except in the.
The City of the Sonoma General Plan Annual Progress Report and the direct staff to distribute to the California Department of the Housing and the Community Development and the Governor's Office of the Land Use and Climate Innovation.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We're gonna do this en masse too. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and since we do not have a second public comment section, I think that this is the time we can call this meeting to adjournment.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. There we go. Oh, my little back hurts. I wonder what I did. Okay, how is it after you? You've been sitting for a while. Tweaked my back. I didn't do my weights today.
This ergonomic stuff, these chairs are just stupid.
I know. Well, you know, the other thing is like, you have to sit in them a certain way, right? Like, if you're not sitting up with your back directly on the.